Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. What an exciting week this week, and it begins here with our forum. We get to hear from our candidates who are running for elected office, and what a better spot than right here at the convention center. I'd like to also welcome, and I have a long list of recognizing people who are in attendance today, our past presidents Kent Junt, Kurt Arthur, Brent DeHart, Barb Hackreich, John Miller, T.J. Sullivan, and Kathy Gordon. Give them a hand. We have a great turnout of our Board of Directors Jeff Miller, Jeff Dunn, Kathy Gordon, Jonathan Castro Monroe, Connor Reiten, Jim Vu, Julie Hoy, Katie Kostick, Ryan Collier, Randy Sutton, Alan Rasmussen, and Mike Karen. Thank you for joining us. Elected officials, we have Mayor Chuck Bennett with us today. Thanks for joining us. Judge Iros Johnson Jr., Iraia, sorry, I was practicing that, I'm so sorry. Marion County Judge. City Councilor Mickey Varney, Councilor Chris Hoy, Mayor Steve Horning, Turner Mayor, Steve Horning, Mayor, or Marion County, Colin Willis, County Commissioner, Councilor Trevor Phillips, Transit District President Ian Davidson, and Polk County Commissioner, I saw Lyle sneak in the door here, Lyle Morehorst. I would like to invite Ron Peters up to present our invocation, followed by Chelsea Lynch from our CTEC business liaison to sing our national anthem.
Please join with me. Our Lord and Heavenly Father, we appreciate you, and we approach your throne with thanksgiving. We thank you for the city, this city, shalom, peace. May your hand extend this peace to the regions in the world who desperately need it today. We thank our leaders, the city statewide and nationally, for their willingness to give themselves selfishly to serve our community. Thank you for raising up new community leaders willing to take on the task of guiding this fair city and state to a better and more prosperous future. For the bounty of which we have partaken, we thank you. For those who prepared it, we request your blessing. For all this, we ask in your matchless name. Amen.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
How many nonprofits in the room are calling me about Chelsea for their next live anthem? Chelsea is one of the great leaders in our partnership with the Salem Kaiser School District and one of our CTEC business liaisons. She teams up with two other incredible individuals, and they are collectively led by Jacob Espinoza on our staff. And Chelsea, wow, all right, all right, super job. And Ron, thank you for the words to start us out. What a great program today, and it is a distinct pleasure, as we do each month, to be able to provide some insight and some collective group thanks to an individual, or in this case, individuals, who are doing very special things to make sure Salem stays an incredibly special community. As always, they never know why they're here, and I like that. And these two are especially hard to fool because one is a past president and one heads up and certainly could be called Ms. Salem. I would like to invite two incredible peers up to the right of the stage if I could, and that is the head of our commercial air service recruitment efforts, Angie Onyewuchi and Brent DeHart. As these two individuals gather, I'd like to talk about why our community is recognizing their efforts right now. We lost commercial air service that many of us enjoyed for a very short portion of time with Delta Airlines a number of years ago, and yet this business community, the state of Oregon, as in the entity of the state of Oregon, and others have had a desperate need for commercial air service to be returning to our market. We are on the precipice of just that. And while these efforts are certainly not complete, we have some great support of our city councilors, a great vision for how this contributes to our community, and probably one of the pieces I am most excited about personally is we are going to remove cars from the highway between Salem I-5 and quite a few communities to the south who are going to utilize this service. We are improving the green footprint by bringing commercial air service back to the Salem market. Airlines today are like all of you in business. We must get green to compete, and airlines are committed to electrification in a lot of different areas for fuel maximization and making sure we're doing the right thing so our community can stay interconnected. I will not take away the sugar that they're going to bring to you, but I will say this, without the help of these two individuals, this would not be coming a reality for our community. Would you help me thank Mr. Brent DeHart and Angie Onanucci for helping bring commercial air service back to the Salem community?
We're going to make it official. Please, you two, take a little time.
Well, I'm very surprised. I looked at Brent, I said, did you know about this? He said, no. I was like, oh my gosh. This is so, I mean, remarkable to be sitting in this room with all of you today. Boy, we've all been through so much to come here over the years, the last couple of years, to be here without masks and seeing all of our smiling faces. My heart really goes out to this entire room. We have been working for about four years on commercial air service, getting it returned to the market. There really isn't anything more important than I could spend my time on. Talk about inserting jet fuel into the community, like putting a Fortune 500 company right smack in the middle of our community. Job creation, all the supply chain, amazing. We have, are at this amazing moment in the history of this project where we are only one of few markets in the country that airlines are actually looking at to start service. We just got back from a conference in San Antonio, and we would go up to the table and the airline would say, man, we're happy to see you here, Salem. Man, Salem's getting a lot of love here. So we are ready for this. We have three airlines that are just about ready to announce service to Los Angeles, San Francisco, Reno, and there will be more to come. So very exciting time. It's taken a community-wide effort to do this. Tom talked about the sustainability of that work. It's going to take 100,000 cars off the road. It's going to remove, the planes that are going to fly out of this market are 30% more fuel efficient because of the technology being used today. It's going to take about 45% of the carbon emissions off of each of us that would typically be driving to Portland, to fly out of Portland. So very exciting time. There'll be more to come, so stay tuned, and I hope I didn't totally say everything. Brent will get it all buttoned up.
Thank you, Angie. And, I mean, that's all great, but I don't know about you, but I hate the 205, right? You know, anybody else hates spending one more night away from home because you have an early flight out of Portland. For us, and I know Dick Withnell's in this camp, it's civic pride. We're the largest capital city in the nation without service, and it's embarrassing. And it's time. Angie, you've been with me, the question used to be, where is Salem? Because the airlines did not know us, did not know we were not Gresham and we're not Beaverton. And now Angie sits there and they said, you're the talk of the conference. That's a long ways we've come. I appreciate this. Tom, I'm just your lowly volunteer. You're here, your board is here, you're showing leadership. Same with your board, Angie. Angie's a rock star people. She's a rock star and the biggest Salem tree leader I know, outpaced only by the entirety of the Salem Chamber, the most pro-Salem organization I think we could ever hope for. So the leadership of your board and your board and SEDCor, if you're not there, I'm not here. I'm here because of you, brother. I volunteer because I believe in your leadership and the leadership of the board, and I can't wait for the Mid Valley to just explode for tourism, for families, for opportunities, for economic development, and that's why I'm here. Then I can retire. Thanks, guys. Thanks so much for the award. Love Salem, love the Chamber.
Thank you, Brent and Angie. Well, this is a familiar saying, "Your way on the parkway." How many times do you hear that? It is certainly a tagline you've heard over and over again. For over 90 years, Capital Auto Group has been a family-owned and operated company in Salem. Each aspect of their business is conducted with a long-term view, from buying and selling a vehicle to comprehensive maintenance of a vehicle that it will need over its lifespan. Capital deploys a professional sales approach, which is free from the traditional car-buying pressured experience. They provide an environment where their sales team and customers share a constructive dialogue focused on customer needs and expectations. There's a deep understanding of their brands they represent. They fully understand their brands of Toyota, Chevrolet, Subaru, and Cadillac. And their employees are the trademark of the Capital cornerstone. Employees are provided extensive training with focuses on hospitality, interpersonal communication, allowing customers the absolute best buying and service experience. Capital Auto Group is committed to the Salem community as well with one of the most dynamic philanthropic programs in the Willamette Valley in the support of United Way and countless other community events and programs. Lastly, Capital Auto Group is unique. Each dealership has a free Wi-Fi for their customers and their one-mile walking trail around their eight-acre lake adjacent to the facilities. You might want to relax and take a swing at a floating golf ball onto the green, eco-friendly floating balls they provide. When servicing your vehicle, guests may also take advantage of the Outback Dog Park. Dogs are welcome, where your pet can run off some energy or select a new toy at the Happy Paws Pet Store inside the magnificent new Subaru building. Capital Auto Group understands Salem and its key part of our business fabric. We are pleased to welcome today's forum speaker series sponsor, Capital Auto Group, represented by former Salem Board Member Alex, also recipient of the Young Professional Award given for citizens, and a dealership for the Subaru Capital Auto Group, oh, dealer for the Subaru Capital Auto Group, Mr. Alex Casebeer.
Well, fun fact about Capital Auto Group and the Chamber is we are deeply connected as we were one of the founding Chamber members in 1927, when the Chamber opened that year. So we're very proud of that. That was great-grandpa Doug McKay, who not many of you know in this room, I know Dick does, because Dick is old, as we all know, from last week. I told him he didn't look a day over 78, so. But hey, thanks for being here, everybody, and your support of the Chamber. Obviously, they do such good work. Having served on the board, I got a little behind-the-scenes peek of the good work they do in the community. The fact that you're here at this specific luncheon means you care about the future of Salem, right? We all want to make positive strides, and to hear from our speakers today, super important that we're all here. So a little bit about Capital Subaru, what we're up to these days. We're obviously dedicated to being a pillar of the community. We have for years, we've had the Subaru store since 1991, and we've made huge financial contributions out on the parkway with, now we have 38 acres out there, all those buildings and the lake and everything. We have almost 400 employees, so we are growing, and we invest in them big time. So in addition to the Subaru store, which just completed last year, we just made another huge infrastructure investment, EV charging stations. So we're now up to almost 40 chargers out at our campus, so the wave is coming. It's not quite here yet, but we'll be ready. Specifically for us, Subaru does have their first EV, all-electric EV coming out in June. There's actually someone in this room who's going to get one of the first ones, and I'm going to out them right now, Jim Vu. So thank you, brother. He's on that list. And Toyota also has one coming out called the BZ4X, so it's actually a partnership with Subaru, so we're co-producing this vehicle. It's going to be a fantastic vehicle, brand new. I want to brag real quick about two things that we're up to to specifically help make Salem better. It's our United Way effort, which we just finished our fundraising campaign in February. We call it 28 Days of Love, or Leap Years, 29 Days of Love, and we focus hard. Every day, we ask a lot of our employees, we expect a lot of our employees, and they showed up this year. Our employees alone, this is no corporate matching, this is no sponsors, this is no anybody else. Our employees gave $340,000 in February. Remarkable. Another way that we take it a step further is that we pay our employees every year to go volunteer. We call it the Day of Giving. We started this a couple of years ago, so you'll see our guys and gals out there volunteering at various nonprofits. They can choose, doesn't matter, and we'll pay them to go do it. So we really, really care about what's going on in the community, and I think that we're right now looking at a time of change, which is evident of why we're here. We all want to see some sort of change, some sort of betterment. The airline service is awesome. That's a huge deal for us. The upcoming elections, huge deal. A lot's going to change in the next couple of months, and we need these strong leaders. This is a room full of strong leaders, and there's a room full of strong leaders over here, too, that want to talk to you. So it's going to be a great thing. On your table, we have those little seeds, right? So Subaru cares a lot about the earth. That's one of their pillars, Subaru loves the earth. It's Earth Month, we've got Earth Day later this month, but also we want to plant seeds of change in the community. We want to see this community grow, just like these sunflower seeds. So it is symbolic. It's also because Subaru loves the earth. But take those home, plant them, stay invested in the community, just like we all are. Thank you very much for being here and for your support. Thanks, guys.
We're going to do a little bit of transformation. Alex, thank you so much to Capital Auto, Matthew, the whole team, really appreciate that support. And then President Doren, thank you as well. We are going to, I'm going to grab one thing from you. I'm going to let you afterwards. It's going to keep my cellphone from vibrating when I'm up here, but I still get to watch the time. Zachary Zaliki is going to be helping me with timing. At this point, I would like to invite our seven city council candidates, pardon me, five city council candidates, as well as our two mayoral candidates to join me on stage. Come on up. We're going to start with City Council President Hoy, Chain Griggs, and then let's go into Danae.
Are you going by height?
No, no, not at all. Danae, and then Deanna, and then we have Julie, Mickey, Council Varney, and Chris. Thank you so much. I'll give you a... Oh, oh. Somebody took off my seat. Hold on. And I'm going to actually move this, Chris, so you're in good shape. Okay. So I am going to, normally we would do the introduction, but we want to allow, per our format, each of these candidates is going to be able to introduce themselves and give a two-minute introduction. What I'd like to do is read for our audience the format of today's meeting, so it can help everybody understand where we're going to go. Two-minute introductions by all seven candidates. There is no rebuttal after the introductions. We have a couple of warm-up questions that will come directly from me that have come through our Board of Directors. Each candidate will have one minute to answer that question, so get brass tacks. This young man right here, Zachary Zaliki, will be showing you some of the cards. You have one minute, 30 seconds, and then the red stop. We would ask, I've seen you all do this before, we know you respect it, if you would, for equity, make sure we're stopping right at one minute, that would be great. And then, because we're the Chamber and we've got to be different, each of the candidates will be able to ask their opponent an unknown question, and then have a one-minute rebuttal following that. Then finally, we will get into questions from the audience. On your seats, you see questions, papers, and some pens. Feel free to fill those out. As you get them ready, put them in the air, and we have Ron Peters, and we have another ambassador, Ron, just you. Okay, so Ron is in charge of collecting those. Those will be brought up right up front to our co-chairs, Jeff Miller for Public Policy, as well as Jonathan Castro Monroe. Folks, let's remember proper questions. This is a great environment. These, each of these individuals are leaders in their own right, willing to run on our behalf, so nothing but respect today. And then finally, the candidates will have a one-minute conclusion. We would like, after the candidates are finished, we have some concluding business that you'll want to hear, so don't rush out. And with that, I'd like to address two things. First of all, you notice that Ward 2 is not represented. Linda Nishioke is running unopposed, but that's not the reason she's here. Linda is in surgery today, and so when you think of passes, that is one that we would certainly allow. So Linda sends her best. Secondly, candidate Stacy Vieira Brendel sent me a message to share with you all that I will read now. "I regrettably cannot attend today. I'm an occupational therapist in a hospital in the region and will be working all day long. Like many hospitals nationwide, we're facing demands of an overloaded and understaffed system. This means that my schedule is less flexible and my patients greatly need my services. I would appreciate if you would relay this to the guests. If I could be here, I absolutely would." So thank you on behalf of candidate Vieira Brendel for allowing her a pass and not being with us today. With that, we are going to start our candidate introductions, and I will turn the first two minutes over to City Council President and State Representative, Mr. Chris Hoy.
Thanks, Tom. It's great to see you all. I think this is my first big luncheon since the pandemic began, so it's kind of a nice thing to see so many faces without masks on. It's really great to be here today. Some people think all politicians are alike, and sometimes people can be cynical, and this election offers you a stark contrast. There are clear differences between my opponent and me: experience, relationships, and money. These differences distinguish the two of us. City Councilor, Council President, Salem Housing Authority Board President, State Representative, Vice Chair of the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, 30 years of local government experience as a deputy sheriff at all ranks. These are the experiences I bring to this election. I have the depth of knowledge on issues necessary to make the decisions critical to our state's capital. I have built and maintained relationships at the city, county, state, and federal levels necessary to achieve the city's goals through collaboration and advocacy. Every one of us knows Salem faces challenges. My experiences and the relationships I've formed have prepared me to deal with these issues head-on, on day one. I've raised the vast majority of the money to fund this campaign from a wide array of community members in small-dollar amounts. The mayor must be ready to work with everyone, regardless of perspective, to achieve what's best for the community, and that's exactly how I approach my role as counselor and how I will approach my role as mayor. The job of the mayor is to work beyond our supporters, to bring people together, to make sure Salem is a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I'm very optimistic about Salem's future. I'm excited to continue the work we've begun revitalizing downtown. I'm eager to expand on the work we've done to address the homeless situation, and I look forward to leading the council and the city going forward. I'm ready to lead, I'm ready to build on the collaboration we've begun, and I'm ready now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mayoral candidate, Chain Griggs.
Thank you, Tom. I want to thank the Chamber and Capital Auto Group for hosting today's event. I'm running because some things in Salem are not working, business owners who are struggling to recover from the two-year pandemic, residents who want to reclaim their downtown and their parks, young couples challenged to find their first home. We can't afford to continue to do business as usual. We look at our homeless issue, and although we've thrown millions of dollars to the problem in the last five years, the situation has not apparently gotten better. In my former role as Assistant Director for the Department of Corrections, I saw firsthand how the evidence-based treatment and programming, coupled with a level of accountability, can work. A key component of addressing the homeless issue is transparent, effective, and accountable public safety. I am confident that under the leadership of Chief Womack, that our police will protect our families and our businesses, if provided adequate resources and support by the mayor and city council. I am proud to share that I have not only the endorsement of the fire union, but also the police union, and I will work closely to ensure that they have the resources to keep us safe and to ensure their safety as well. As Planning Commission President, I know another issue facing our community is the fact that we're running out of buildable residential and multifamily land. We cannot afford to have that mindset, that Salem is no place for growth. Too many of our children and our retirees are wanting to call Salem their home, too. I'm confident that with my past work with city committees that I will talk about later, and commissions, and with my professional background, that I am uniquely qualified and ready on day one to seek this office. Not only do I have the experience, but I also have the endorsements from leaders across both sides of the aisle. It speaks to my ability to put partisan rhetoric aside and look for solutions to issues that we face in our community. I know there are other issues we face, and I look forward to addressing those in this conversation.
Thank you, Chain. Candidate for Ward 4, Danae Medlock.
Hi. I have lived in Salem for the last 14 years in Ward 4. I love this place, and I feel like I could be a good voice for the community. My husband, Michael Medlock, and myself have two lovely children. Our oldest is Ben, and he goes to Leslie Middle School, and our youngest, Kiana, attends Battle Creek Elementary School. I feel that I am a good candidate for city council because my experience running my own
I'm an Air Force brat, actually, so as I was listening to her sing, I was remembering, being on Air Force bases, I don't know if any of you guys have, but if you go to a movie theater, before every movie, they play the National Anthem, or at least they did. They might not anymore. So it brought back very fond memories. She's amazing. But I am a longtime resident of Salem. I have deep roots here. We've been here, I've been here for over 40 years. My husband and I have been married for 31 years. We have a 20-year-old daughter. I'm not a politician. I've worked as a real estate broker with Gladys Blum, many of you may know her, for 29 years. I've always been the behind-the-scenes person, but I'm the one that can get the job done. I have watched our city council meetings for the last three or four years online, and I've frankly been concerned just with the direction that we're headed. So I'm hoping to get feedback from all of you, and from folks in our ward, and to make a positive impact, so. Vote May 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Candidate for Ward Six, Julie Hoy.
I've lived in the same house on Center Street here in Salem for 31 years. I live in Ward Six. A few statistics: There are 22,000 people living in Ward Six, and only about 2,000 vote. Ward Six is the most culturally diverse ward in Salem, with the highest density population and approximately 48% Hispanic. I admit, it wasn't until last Thursday that I attended my first Neighborhood Association meeting. I always counted on the fact that someone else was driving that bus and looking out for the best interest of the rest of us. My heart broke as I listened to an older gentleman speak of the RVs parked on their neighborhood street. Out for a stroll, he and his wife witnessed a door fly open and a bucket of God knows what landing all over the sidewalk. "The smell was awful," he said. "And why isn't anybody doing anything about it?" The response given was a reference to code enforcement, and how is this kind of thing takes time, and there isn't enough room in Salem to dispose of the campers being used for this purpose. Having worked to earn what they own, shouldn't these tax-paying residents in the twilight of their years be able to go for a walk in their neighborhood without this kind of encounter? This is one story, only one tip of the iceberg. Underneath it all are broken families and relationships, mental illness, drug addiction, and alcohol addiction, handouts without expectation of contribution, and politics who spend precious time furthering an ideology and seeking advancement to higher office rather than genuinely serving the people of our community. This city is in crisis, and some wards feel it more than others. I'm not concerned about changing a speed limit. I want decency and order returned to our neighborhoods. I want proper training and support for law enforcement. I want adequate services for the suffering. I'm not about to start memorizing buzz language to further an agenda. We have come to a place where there is right and there is wrong, and something needs to be done about it. I am here to serve.
Thank you, Julie. Candidate for Ward Eight and City Councilor, Mickey Varney.
Hello, everybody, and thank you very much. And thank you to Salem Chamber and sponsor Capital Auto Group for inviting me to speak today. As Tom said, I'm Mickey Varney, current City Councilor representing Ward Eight, West Salem. Earlier this year, I was unanimously selected by the Salem City Council to fulfill the rest of Jim Lewis's term. In the past, I have served as the Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as Chair and Parks Chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and I was a previous City Councilor in Dayton, Washington. I am running to continue to serve West Salem because I love living here and because we are at a crossroads, both as a ward and as a city. In the next two years, we will be updating and approving master planning documents that will guide Salem's growth for the next 20 years. We're faced with a homeless crisis, an affordable housing crisis, a life-threatening climate crisis, and we are in dire need of improving the infrastructure and services available to Salem residents. I'm advocating for zoning changes and public-private partnerships that can make building new affordable housing an attractive option, and that can help in the establishment of small businesses to address the lack of services in Ward Eight. I'm pursuing avenues to ensure that our police and public safety offers have the funding and support they need to keep us safe. As a member of the Infrastructure Bond Steering Committee, I'm working to fund the construction of Marine Drive, to get our children to school safely, and to ensure Salem's investments and its residents are protected. I'm running so I can continue to serve the West Salem community I love, while preserving and enhancing that small-town feeling that drew me to West Salem in the first place. Thanks.
Thank you, Mickey. Ward Eight candidate, Chris Cummings.
Good morning, everybody. And actually, it's afternoon now, but it's okay. Thank you to the Salem Chamber and Capital Auto Group for setting this up and having us here today. It's an honor to be here. I just wanted to say, you know, I'm a local business owner that wants Salem to be a great place to live, work, and have fun. While spending a number of years in IT business, taking care of families and people around me in business, our communities, I've noticed, have now got less safe, and crime is growing. Affordable housing is disappearing, and our homelessness is out of control. I've decided to step up and get into the nuts and bolts of correcting that. My grassroots is common sense and logic, and I lead the, I'm willing to lead the efforts for the city to get back on track and reconnect with the community. With over 32 years of being in business, I know what makes financial sense, how to analyze data in facts, and to prioritize and solve complex problems. With the support of many Salem businesses, I'm ready to get to work. Now is the new chapter for the city. I will listen to the community, take on the issues, and plan wisely for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we're going to transition into a couple warm-up questions. We are going to start with Council President Hoy, and then move to candidate Griggs, and so on down the line. Thank you for passing the microphone back down. As a reminder, these questions, you have one minute to answer, and there will be no rebuttal to you, to those with an opponent here today. Question number one: Homelessness is the number-one concern of Salem residents. As a city councilor, what changes or additions would you advocate for to address the crisis with our friends and neighbors on the streets? Chris Hoy.
Thank you, Tom. The first thing I would do is I would do a better job of communicating what we actually have done to the community. That's one of the number-one issues that we face, is that people don't actually know what we've been doing. We have permanent supportive housing. We have incentivized affordable housing. We have our micro shelter communities that we've established, and we're getting ready to open a navigation center. These are all best practices that are proven to work elsewhere, and we're making them work here. It was mentioned earlier that what we're doing isn't, what we're doing isn't working, but I would, I would just offer that that is not actually the case. It's not obvious that it's working, but over 60% of the people that go into our micro shelter communities are moving on to a positive destination. That means either drug and alcohol treatment, permanent housing, or other places. I would actually continue on that, that work. I would open the navigation center, increase the number of permanent supportive housing sites that we have, and expand the number of micro shelter communities. That would be my near term.
Thank you, Chris. Candidate Griggs.
Thank you. I believe it's 60% of the women with children that are moving out of the micro shelters with success. It's a, it's not quite as pretty of a picture with the men. But it is time for Salem leaders to realize some things are not working. We've allocated a great deal of money to this issue, and we need an improved approach. We can't afford to build our way out of this crisis, but we can more effectively offer programming and treatment that we know works, that's evidence-based. I'm all for that. To do that, I will expand our partnerships with Marion County on the programs we know are working, that are often our responses to the homeless population, such as the LEEDS program and the Mobile Crisis Units. I really hate me doing that. And I will continue to partner with the nonprofits who are so good at the work that they do. For example, the Arches, with their Day Center, and the Arches Inn, and then the navigational center that Councilor Hoy mentioned. Because of Hazel Patton's work, we have many micro shelters ready to be sited, and that's going to be a great approach. They work because they have expectations of accountability, and they use evidence-based programs.
Thank you, candidate Griggs.
You got this.
Candidate Metlock.
I think we can all agree that actions today are insufficient, but it will take real work and community building to come up with realistic solutions that will statistically make a difference. The number of programs going on right now are historic, but they're inadequate compared to the scale and magnitude of the problem. One idea that I hope gets a lot of support is the Community Sanitation Team. From what I understand, this team can be called if a person starts living in an unsafe location, such as on a sidewalk or in an alley between buildings. This makes sense to me, because having homeless individuals outside businesses makes people feel unwelcome and unsafe. My hope is with this response team, which includes police officers, we will get a faster return on our investment, and our community will feel safer and more welcome.
Thank you, Danae. Candidate Gwin.
So obviously, the homeless issue in Salem, the unsheltered, the folks living outside, is a very complex, a very complex issue. I'm very much in support of Navigation Center, but I'm, I also have concerns about accountability. I mean, I, I feel like we need options, but we also need these folks to come to terms with, with their addiction and, well, just their addiction issues. And I would be in support of a Mobile Crisis Unit as long as we have support by police officers with trained, with trained response teams.
Thank you, candidate Gwin. Candidate Hoy.
I own a restaurant on Lancaster, and it's called Geppetto's. And I deal with homeless people often out there. I need to call, and I'm there, we are unincorporated, so I need to call Marion County. At my house, went home for window time for about an hour in the afternoon a few weeks back, and there was a homeless person across the street who had made his camp in the, in the entrance to the church across from our home. I had to call Salem PD for that. What's being done doesn't seem to be working well for everyone, and I think that the mental illness and addiction problems are behind it for the most part, and we really need to find a way to reach these people and to require contribution and investment if they are able.
Thank you, candidate Hoy. Candidate Varney.
Thanks. I know we all look around, and we want to just snap our fingers and have the, you know, we all wish we could solve the issue and help our unsheltered a lot faster than what we see is going on. But I agree with Councilor Hoy. The majority of people I talk to do not realize the actions that the city council, the city has already implemented in working with many partners, the legislature, and others, to work and start making progress. It's taken time. Our unsheltered need a safe, secure, sanitary place to be, and we have a responsibility as a city to provide options, to provide services. And I'm actually very supportive of what the city council has done so far. I mean, look at Yaquena Hall, the Navigation Center, the micro shelter communities, the safe camping areas. We're making little inroads, but the problem is, the stream coming into it just keeps building. We need more affordable housing, and we need educational opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mickey.
No, it's kind of bright right there.
No, all good. And I, by the way, my least favorite duty, interrupting an elected official. So please, my apologies when I do it, but we're going to, we're going to stay on task. Candidate Cummings.
Yes. So it is a huge, huge problem. It's been recorded in the polling since 2016 that the homeless is just shooting out of control. So we've had since 2016 to where the charts have actually been showing us the data that we need as a city to be doing something about this, and since then, we haven't caught up to that. So we need to have a change. We need to be able to get into this and figure out what's going to happen proactively to keep this problem from occurring and taking care of our future generations. I am a proponent for the Navigation Center, and I would like to see that come online. I'd like to expedite that, and work to obtain grants so that families don't see the tax increases as a repercussion of that. But also, I'll throw in there that a mental health crisis van is also a good idea, and seems to be working in some other communities, and so that's also another idea that we could bring back, or bring online here and actually put that to work.
Thank you, candidate Cummings. Okay. And you're going to keep the mic, Chris. We're going to start with you and go in reverse order. The second warm-up question. This coming November, Salomites will have an opportunity to vote on a proposed $300 million bond measure to fund local infrastructure projects, fire equipment, and affordable housing. One project that is brought forward for funding is the creation of 55 miles of protected bike lanes throughout Salem's current street system. In the proposal, this may require a loss of vehicular lanes in a number of key arterials in the city. As a city councilor, would you be in support or in opposition to this effort? And what changes, if any, would you bring to consideration by the bonds, bring to the Bond Steering Committee for consideration? And we will start with candidate Cummings.
Thank you. I am more a proponent of taking care of homeless than bike lanes. I'll put it out there. We really need to dig into putting some of the dollars into infrastructure that actually supports the homeless. I don't think it would alleviate the number of places that we have congestion right now as well, and I think these dollars could go better into fixing potholes and building our infrastructure so that we, as a community that already is trying to get around in Salem, actually can get around. It does rain a lot in Salem, so I think the majority, based on the polling, is that there's a lot of people that come in from out of town that actually travel through our roads, and there's a lot of people that leave out that travels. So getting around with our families and our communities and packing all of our gear for our baseball games and things like that, I think is important for getting the infrastructure that we have deteriorating under control.
Thank you, Chris. Council Varney.
I agree with you that we do need to get, get a lot of funding into infrastructure, the other things with the bond that are crucially important to our public safety and preserving certain other things in our city, but when it comes to the infrastructure and regarding this particular question, yes, we need the ways to get around. We need a better transit system. I've seen bike, you know, the bike lanes, that they're disconnected. We need a way to connect people so they, so that they can get from place to place and be safe, and that's critically crucial. But if, I don't know if you've seen the project list for the Infrastructure Bond Steering Committee, but we have a lot of infrastructure projects that have been sitting, waiting for a long time, that we need to look at as well. And as, you know, we need it all, but we have to make the decisions as to what is most crucial at the, at the time. But having the bike lanes and the connectivity ties right into our Climate Action Plan, which we have already adopted.
Thank you. Candidate Hoy.
Well, again, I live on Center Street, and every school day there, you can see a mom with a stroller and small children tailing behind with no sidewalk, coming from an apartment complex, just trying to get to school at Auburn or Swiegel. And I think those kinds of things should be priorities. We are not Portland.
Thank you, Julie. Candidate Gwin.
And I don't live on Center Street. I do live in an apartment out in South Salem, because we're having a new home built. Bike lanes, while for folks that bike, I mean, they're probably great, I will tell you that just a week ago, we were woken up in the middle of the night by some strange noise downstairs. We look out the window. We look out the window and a van is being towed away. It was our neighbor with three little kids, her van was being repossessed. I think it's that, well, and so we went and woke her up. She had to get her strollers out of the car, and I couldn't help but think, if she is forced to take public transportation, how is she gonna get her five-year-old to kindergarten? How is she gonna get to the grocery store? How is she going to get her other...
Thank you, candidate Gwynn. Sorry, sorry about that again.
You're fine.
Not a fun spot here. Candidate Medlock.
So, I can agree with what everyone said so far about sidewalks. Seriously, I saw a bunch of my neighbors the other, the other day trying to walk down the street. It was really sad and very scary. You know, imagine, I have known many people who have gotten surgery, they're just trying to walk down the street. It's really scary. You know, there, there are all these places where we have to make improvement. It's not if, you know, we, we need, it's when, and I think that when is now. Other things that are very important are the, the fire trucks. I mean, I know people go, oh, that is so expensive, but did you know that those fire trucks have over 440,000, uh, 40,000 miles on them? I don't know about you, but as a person who just bought a car, if I was trying to drive a car that had 440,000 miles and expect to get me to the hospital or wherever, I'd be really putting my life on the line. So, we have to replace those fire trucks for the fire department because we depend on them.
Thank you. Candidate Griggs.
A great deal of work has gone into this infrastructure bond measure, and we need to remember that it's an infrastructure bond measure. Our priority should be identifying those, those items that will ensure that our community will be safe, and that might not be 55 miles of bike lanes, and then also bolstering our existing infrastructure, as all of my colleagues have mentioned, I won't be redundant. As a community, we have other needs, such as additional fire stations and replacing equipment. Did you know that the city standard, oh my God, the city standard for response rates is five and a half minutes 85% of the time? We're at 61% of the time, and that's just the city standard. Our national standard is even more stringent. We would be horrible in that arena. So, there are many other issues this bond could address, but I think it's incumbent, primarily, that the council looks at exactly what will be funded and let us know what that will be, do a cost-benefit analysis, let us know how that's gonna work, and identify the issues that we know would be supported by this bond measure.
Thank you, candidate Griggs. And finally, candidate Hoy.
Thanks. I've got good news and bad news for you. The good news is, Julie, that, that project on Center Street is getting ready to be constructed. That's mostly a county project, and right when I got in the city council, I met with our commissioners, prioritized that very issue, and that project on the south side of Center Street is due to start really soon, and then the north side will be constructed not, in the not-too-distant future. It's already, the south side is already funded, so good news for you. The bad news is that the 55 miles of bike lanes that were proposed in this question aren't actually one of the things we're considering on the bond. It's a, it's a framework that one of my colleagues and some others have put forward. If we look at bike lanes, that we would consider protected bike lanes, but it's not its own standalone project. It's not, if you look at our project list, I'm on that subcommittee going through those projects in detail, that's not one of them. We do need to prioritize things that are going to have significant impact on our infrastructure, Marine Drive, things like that. That's carrying through with one of our promises. I'm very committed to that. But those 55 miles of bike lane, that was more of a, of a concept or a framework as we look at bike lanes in the future, not a project.
Thank you. And our last warm-up question before we turn to the secret question.
How are these different than the regular questions?
I'm just trying to have some fun, Chris. Work with me a little. Okay.
Because I'm warm.
Well, that's good, because you're keeping the mic, sir.
Awesome.
As a city councillor, in your case, as mayor, what would you do to ensure we have a strong and vibrant economic ecosystem in Salem where businesses, small and large, may operate and employ Salem residents?
Thanks, Tom. Well, I think we need to continue the strong partnership that we have with SEDCor first and foremost, and with the Chamber. Those are things, those are the folks who advocate for small businesses in our community, and we need to have a healthy relationship. We need to continue our revitalization of downtown. We have certain levers that we can pull to help incentivize building down there, and we do that frequently. We've been doing that. There are a lot of projects coming online, and we need to continue with those kinds of things. The Nordstrom Building redevelopment, the Nishioke Building, all of these buildings that we've been redoing, we need to continue, and we need to create an atmosphere where Salem is an inviting place and people want to be. I think the air service that was talked about before we started our warm-up questions is also something that can really help, can really help energize our city, and so I'm in support of that as well. So, those are some of the things I would do.
Thank you. Candidate Griggs.
Thank you. I get to talk slower because I really don't disagree with anything that councillor Hoy said on that one, but I think we need to look at opportunities where we can see best practices. What are other vibrant cities about our size doing that we could possibly consider doing? I was just up in Portland visiting with former Mayor Gertner Rich yesterday, and as an example, he lives down on the South Waterfront Park area. It would be wonderful, Josh and Jordan, if we could look at ways to develop that, your front street area, similar to with the way they have done it, where they have, you know, setbacks of about 100 feet for a greenway, and then the height of the building is at a certain limit. You can go further back, and your building can be taller, and the parking is in the ground. We need to look at some of those opportunities that, we've got that great asset, so I think that would contribute.
Thank you, Shane. Danae.
Hello again. So, I think moving forward, so that we can get things going the way we want to, we need to continue to partner up together. We need to really think, how can we have more private-public partnerships? Because as we can see here already, you know, through the Chamber, so much has already been achieved, and if we continue to reach out, continue to talk to each other and get these ideas and move them forward, I know we can make things happen for the better and to make Salem thrive. I know if I'm elected to city council, my door will always be open to you. The Chamber can give me a call, email me, I am here, and I am very, very hopeful that with all of our ideas together, we can make great strides for Salem.
Thank you, candidate Medlock. Candidate Gwynn.
Thank you. I think first and foremost, we, Salem needs that commercial air service. It will bring in so much more revenue for, we'll have the travel industry, we'll have sports events, we have folks coming in from all over the country. I mean, I could see us having conventions here at the convention center and, and folks flying in. So, I, that would be my first, and that would be it.
Thank you, candidate Gwynn. Candidate Hoy.
Well, if anybody knows me, they know I'm not afraid to seek wisdom and ask for help. So, I'm with Shane on we should take a look at what other places are doing and what's really working well and do our best to figure out how to implement. Yeah. And how about a bridge?
Thank you, candidate Hoy.
Well, thanks. We'll probably get to that later. Anyway, okay, the question on the table here, and by the way, yeah, I like the idea of air service. Then I don't have to take four hours off of work to go up to Portland to pick up a friend and come back home. Anyway, I wanna, I support public-private partnerships. We've got a lot of nonprofits, a lot of great businesses in the West Salem area, and I want to do what I can to support them. We've got the redevelopment going on in the Edgewater District. We really need more local services in West Salem. You know, West Salem, we have an issue with traffic congestion, and I'd love to have more services so I didn't have to go back across that bridge all the time, to be honest with you. We also need to support the new development that'll be going on out the Marine Drive direction, and that's another reason why I support construction of Marine Drive, because that will bring more the services and a transportation option to West Salem.
Thank you, candidate Varney. And finally, candidate Cummings.
Yeah, I, being down here on the end, all of the wind's been taken out with the air service, so, but that was one of them as well that I think will bolster the economy here in Salem and bring more commerce into the Salem, also to help with some dignitaries getting in and out of our capital city, too. So, that's huge. It's a little known fact, a little known fact that there's a bunch of property out there ready to go with utilities to do just that. It doesn't take a whole lot of effort to get that going. So, infrastructure is huge, and that would also bolster just the small business communities and with commerce in general and getting around town and making it easy for visitors.
Okay. Now, we're gonna do a little pivot into some fun stuff. Councillor Cummings, you may ask candidate Varney one question, and Mickey, you will have one minute to respond. Chris, you will get one-minute rebuttal. Then we will reverse order. Chris, please start us out.
All right. Yes, so, this is the scary part, yeah, exactly. So, would you vote on a motion at city council to get the Salem River Crossing project moving again?
Well, as we all know, we do need a bridge, but we need a bridge, is this working? Okay. We need a bridge that works. We don't need one that's gonna dump traffic back into the same area and destroy 100 homes and businesses. We need one, we need a regional solution, like they proposed back in the late 70s, as I already heard today. We all know, more, more traffic comes across our bridges from outside of Salem than within Salem. It's a regional issue, and we need to get the counties together, all of our local governments, SCATS, everyone together to come up with a solution to get people from I-5 out to 99 and out that way, so that we don't have to have folks come through the middle of town all the time. But I do support another bridge, and probably another one after that from the way we keep growing. We need to plan for it.
Thank you. Rebuttal by candidate Cummings.
This is the back-and-forth part. So, yeah, I would actually support this if it came across city council's desk again, and in a city this size, I, you know, coming to 100% agreement on how that these, these structures can actually work, we're all gonna have different opinions. So, I am actually pretty pleased with what the city had actually proposed and did a fine job with all the community and the feedback, and I think that we just need to make a decision and move forward so that we can remove this logjam for future generations.
Thank you, candidate Cummings. Mickey, your turn to ask a question.
Okay, thank you. Oh, boy. Being on city council requires you, you know, have a knowledge of your community and that you communicate a lot with folks in your community. So, I just wanted to know, describe your involvement in government-related decision-making bodies and why you believe that experience qualifies you to represent the people of West Salem.
That one's an easy one, actually. I have no prior government experience. I'm a small business owner that's actually been doing this for about 32 years, and I am a big, big, big proponent of being active in the community and getting down into the West Salem Neighborhood Association and holding some coffees and getting some one-on-ones with people in my community to learn what's actually going on with boots on the ground inside of their neighborhoods and what's important to them, and to be able to address those family issues and crises that they're actually facing and to work to solutions to be able to bring back to the city council.
Thank you, candidate Cummings. Mickey, rebuttal.
Well, I appreciate that. I was thinking about the past. You've stated your experience has been with boosters, and I have to admit, it's great being involved in the community. My kids were in athletics, but fundraising is a lot different than the decisions that are made at either the neighborhood associations, on the boards and commissions, on the task forces. It's really, really crucial that you have the experience to understand how the whole process works. And I just, I just lost my train of thought, sorry. And to me, that's, experience is invaluable. It just doesn't, you can't read about it, you can't just absorb it immediately. It takes time, and I put in the time to do so, and that's just the way it is.
Thank you, candidate Varney. Sorry, Julie.
Oh, well.
Candidate Gwynn, your question for candidate Medlock.
So, we've all heard about the Climate Action Plan, and there's the potential to ban natural gas in commercial, new commercial and residential buildings. So, I just wanted to know your thoughts on that. Are you in support of that?
Glad you asked. I think it is very unlikely that there's a move to restrict natural gas in the short term. As technology advances, more and more, we will need to increase incentives to prioritize alternatives to natural gas, but I'm not aware of any realistic plans to eliminate natural gas. I mean, I have natural gas at my house, at home, and I don't see it being turned off in the near future. There would need to be a community conversation about any proposal to do something as significant as that.
And, thank you. And rebuttal.
So, not only is that part of the plan, it also goes on to say that the city would want to implement an ordinance that requires a home energy score, much like Portland and Milwaukee. And they, upon the sale, there's the potential upon the sale of your home that you might have to actually convert to natural gas, so.
Thank you. And candidate Medlock, your question for candidate Gwynn.
Okay. Howdy, neighbor. So, I'm curious, when exactly you moved to Ward 4? And since moving here, what do you feel is a top priority for our ward?
So, I've, like I said, lived in Salem for 40 years. The last 17, actually, I've lived in Ward 4 for a year prior to, but I've always been in South Salem for that 40 years. Ward 4, I would say, actually, I think that Ward 4 is in pretty good shape, to be honest. There are some sidewalks that need to be, that need to be updated, but the truth is, this isn't just about Ward 4. I mean, as a city councillor, we are concerned about the entire city, and we want a livable, viable city from downtown to Ward 1, to Ward 5, all of them, not just Ward 4.
Thank you, candidate Gwynn. Rebuttal.
As a representative of Ward 4, we are supposed to be a voice for the neighbors, and I know that it's part of the whole, but the reason why that I, we are, if we get on council, we're assigned to Ward 4, it is to speak for our neighbors. And it is very important to me that we speak about things that are incredibly important. I mean, I remember in my neighborhood, before we had a light at the corner, so many people were dying at that corner. It was really upsetting, and if there wasn't someone who spoke up for the ward for the neighborhood, we would not have gotten that signal. So, it is very important to know that you're not just for the city, you're for the residents that are in that ward.
Thank you, candidate Medlock. Candidate Griggs, your question for president, city council president Hoy.
I'll show you yours if you show me mine. On a serious note, you know that I've been endorsed by the Police Union and the Fire Union, support of their work is a priority for me, and we've just weathered through a couple of horrible fire seasons and tragically learned of a death of a St. Paul volunteer firefighter this spring. During the short session, there was a tax credit bill that would have given rural volunteer fire departments a tool that would help them recruit for the work that they need so desperately, and it would have resulted in less than 1% of the budget. With that in mind, please explain why during this short session, you voted against a $1,000 tax credit for volunteer firefighters.
Thank you, Shane. I'm gonna have to do a little fact-check on you. I'm actually one of the sponsors of that bill. I voted against bringing it directly to the floor out of committee. I did not vote against the bill. I was a sponsor of that bill, absolutely supported it. I absolutely support our firefighters. As a deputy sheriff for 30 years, trust me, I support first responders.
Thank you, candidate Hoy. And rebuttal.
I would love to rebut that. You're right, that is not a normal procedure to pull a bill out of committee. Typically, it goes through a hearing, work session, then a vote, and then it goes to the floor, but there is a way to do that if there is support in, in the way of votes. With you, you were in a unique opportunity to do the right thing because you're in the office for a year. You could have gone against your caucus and said, no, we need to pull this and we need to vote, we need to have a vote on it, but you chose not to.
Thank you, candidate Griggs. Candidate Hoy, your question for candidate Griggs. Thank you, candidate Griggs. Candidate Hoy, your question for candidate Griggs.
You ready? You sure? Pull up the one on homelessness. Get your talking points on homelessness ready, because I'm hitting you on it. Five years ago, the city of Salem was doing nothing to address homelessness. Since then, we have created a number of programs based on best practices to begin addressing the problem. During your campaign, you've been critical of the city's approach to addressing homelessness crisis. Yet you specifically sought out and accepted the endorsement of individuals who led that response or lack of response. And on your website, until recently, you were advocating for a Portland plan to address homelessness. That plan has since been removed from your website. This is a critical issue to Salem residents. What specifically would you have done differently to address homelessness had you been the mayor during this time?
I am not aware that there was anything posted on my website because we don't really remove anything. So that's a shock to me that you seem to have thought that there was something placed on the website. And I'm not saying that what we're doing is not good work. We just need to do a better job and more effectively move these individuals through the care that they need to get them into more independent living. I'm not saying anything about the Portland situation. I'm not sure even where you're getting that. The Bud Clark 12-point plan is an excellent plan, and let me tell you why. Because one of his 12 tenants, in 1988, he said there needs to be a level of accountability. And that's the point that I pointed to in his plan, not the overall plan. The point that he said, you need to provide programming and treatment with some level of accountability. It cannot be just a free bed and free food. And that was a reference to the Bud Clark. So it was taken a little bit out of context.
And rebuttal.
Thank you. I didn't see anything about accountability, but that, I'm not saying it's not there, I didn't see it. Number 10, awesome. I meant in terms of what you highlighted. And I guess I would just say, in terms of rebuttal, how'd that work out for Portland?
There's, we're not gonna respond. I know we want to. Love, we're getting a little warmer in the room. Okay, or at least I am up here, maybe it's just me.
That was a friendly question.
It was. And I gotta say, and this is obviously editorial, very good for our community to have two extremely knowledgeable people vying for this position. Thank you on behalf of all of us. Okay, that's right. Mr. Jonathan, would you mind our first question from the audience? By the way, ladies and gentlemen, I'd just like to thank all of you for extending your lunch a little long today. We hope that the entertainment, although we do not provide popcorn, has been sufficient for you. This is a first question for all candidates. Let's vary order. I'd like to start with candidate Medlock, and we'll go down the line and circle back to our mayoral candidates. When will homeless camping in Salem be outlawed? It has gone on for too long. Do you support camping on our streets? And will you be supportive of establishing a vagrancy law?
I feel ya. It's tough, living in South Salem, it's living anywhere in Salem, and seeing how the problem has really grown exponentially in regards to homelessness. And just compounded by the last few years, everything that's gone on. And what I think is, we definitely need to have individuals go in a setting that works, such as managed shelters. I think that microshelters are a great idea. I think that using, leasing some of the land that Chris Hoy over here was able to get, you know, get passed through the state, so we can lease land in Salem that is owned by the state, I think that would be great. I don't want people, you know, in tents camping outside my yard or anybody else's yard. It's not safe. It's not good for anybody. So managed with security and with services.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think that answered the question about a vagrancy law. I would be in support of a vagrancy law. We have lots of shelter beds now. My understanding of why the vagrancy laws went away was because of the decision in Boise that said, if you don't have enough beds, then you can't, you can't have that. But, so I'm definitely in support of a vagrancy law.
Me too. I want, I want better for everyone. And I think Salem has lost its boundaries. And we need to get some back and make sure that people are taken care of and provided for and not simply coming because they know they can do these things here and not have consequences.
Well, we can't have a vagrancy law because, as you said, the decision in Boise, the Ninth District Court of Appeals that says that was in, I think it was 2019, we can't arrest people for sleeping in public. So that's not an option. In terms of beds, what do we have? About 1,500 homeless, and I don't believe we have that many beds. So if there are no beds available, we can't have a vagrancy law, quite frankly. As chair of the Parks Board, the Parks Board, the, anyway, we sent a message to council that we did not approve continued camping in our parks. So that was a big issue. And, I mean, I realize it's a problem, but we don't have a lot of options right now. We're working at it. We're working at it with the housing. We're working at getting more affordable housing and providing the shelters and the microshelters.
Thank you.
The homeless on the streets is a big issue, and we do need to have some more programs in place to get transitions, transition programs going. And the, I do support the vagrancy law, but there's a lot of loopholes in the current system right now that ties different departments from being able to take care of the problem that we all see and to be able to take them to a place that they can actually house their stuff and find the next steps. And also, then that comes back to getting the navigation center online so that we have a place to take these people and give them direction on where the next steps are.
Thank you. Would you kindly mind passing the microphone down to City Council President Hoy to start?
Thank you. Do I support a vagrancy law? No. You're not gonna, you can't put people in jail for being homeless. Now, does that mean we shouldn't have boundaries and shouldn't, I don't like people sleeping on the sidewalks. I think it's horrible. It's horrible for businesses, but it's really horrible for the people who find themselves in that situation. We need to find meaningful, compassionate alternatives that will not require that people sleep on the sidewalk. We need to give them an option to sleep somewhere else where they can receive the services they need. Things like our navigation center that we're getting ready to open. That is gonna be a game changer in Salem. Those are the kinds of programs that we need so that people sleeping on the sidewalk is not an issue. Making a law against it isn't going to help anything. The jail is never going to accept people for being homeless. That's not something you're gonna lock people up for, nor should we. Thank you.
So we've hit on the issue of the sit-lie ordinance, i.e. the vagrancy law. And it's, you're correct, it is a circuit court opinion that we can't do that unless we have available beds. They can't just be any available bed. It cannot be a UGM bed because that's a higher barrier. It needs to be a low-barrier shelter. So that's why the secret sauce is we need more of these microshelter beds. DJ Vincent has assured me that he will work with us, the city, to, when they can cite more of these shelters, they will keep some in reserve so that we can say, yes, we do have an option for you. You can go to this microshelter, receive that treatment programming that you need, but you cannot be on our streets.
Excellent. We're gonna pick up the pace, starting with candidate Griggs. Which of your endorsements are you most proud of and why?
I, what I am proud of is that the endorsements that I've received have crossed partisan lines. I have Senator, Senate President Peter Courtney, and I have Representative Raquel Moregreen is an example. I have, so the unions I've already mentioned. But what I'm proud of is it's not just one side of the aisle that represents their support of me in an endorsement. And for those of you who are very politically uninclined to hear an endorsement from a politician, I did even get the endorsement from the former OSU baseball coach, Pat Casey. And as of yesterday, I've received all the endorsements, including Mayor Chuck Bennett, thank you, and all the living mayors in Oregon. I'm pretty proud of that.
Living mayors in Salem? You've heard it here, she's now doubled down. She's received all the endorsements of all the living mayors in Oregon. Yeah, I know a lot of mayors you don't know.
Oh, of Salem! You didn't say that. You said all the living mayors. I gave you the chance to fix it.
The one I'm most proud of is AFSCME, the local union that represents the vast majority of the city employees. Those are the folks who see us and the results of the decisions we've been making and who I've had the opportunity to work with, and I was really proud to receive their endorsement, the city employees, AFSCME.
Thank you. Would you mind passing that down?
Well, I gotta tell you that I got into this race pretty late since the person who was running before me had health issues. So getting, you know, getting my foot in the door and running, I am incredibly proud of getting my endorsement from Chris Hoy over here, thank you, friend, from Senator Deb Patterson, and also from Paul Evans. So I think that one of my proudest endorsements are from the residents that I know around me. Those who have supported me, those who have donated to my campaign. I haven't taken any campaign contributions from large organizations outside. I've only taken my donations from fellow residents here in Salem.
Well, I'm most proud of the endorsement by the Realtor Association, of which I am a member. So they are my peers, my friends, my family, so.
I am being endorsed by the HBA and the Mid Valley Realtors Association, and their support means a lot. My official endorsement is Mayor Chuck Bennett. And I feel really good about that because I really believe he's a genuinely good man, who has sacrificed a lot of time, and he sees something in me, so.
I'm most appreciative of the endorsement of my fellow city councillors. I've always been a team player. I played sports, middle school, high school, into college. And it's important to have a diverse team that has different strengths that we can all bring together to solve problems. And so that's why I really appreciate the endorsement of my fellow councillors.
Some of my endorsements, actually, the top that I would like to thank is the Home Builders Association and the Mid Valley Association of Realtors as well. And just recently, also got the AFSCME Local 2067, which is actually the city employees as well. It was actually code endorsed. And then I have a ton of friends. And friends actually are what keeps me going. A lot of support from businesses that are colleagues of mine and for some personal friends that are just getting behind me and saying, you got this, let's make some change for Salem here. And also then honorable mention to Mountain West as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're coming close, but guess what? I can talk real fast on wrap-up. There is one question that must be asked, and so if you can, you don't have to go the full minute. How do you, how will you engage and empower members of our diverse minority communities, including black-owned businesses, minority groups, Pacific Islander, Hispanic, and the like in this community? How will you engage with them and empower them? Chris, please start us off, and we'll go down the line.
Yeah, I look at everybody without a lens. People around me, I just wanna have a conversation that gets the job done. And to engage at everybody's level, wherever they're at, in business and around the neighborhood, to be able to bring all people from all different walks of life into a common place for a good, healthy conversation so that we can actually take care of the issues at hand and actually come up with solutions.
I agree with you, Chris. We need to look at everything we do through that equity lens. I think it's important to reach out and not just educate, but actually go over and stand with our businesses and individuals who maybe have not had the same step up that many of us have had. I feel that's really crucial. I've been like that my whole life, always assisting the underdog to become more empowered and have a voice and be stronger.
I live in Ward 6, and there are 22,000 people who live there and only about 2,000 vote. Something's wrong with that. And I think the people who live there, 48% of which are Hispanic, are not being engaged. And I feel it's important to do something about that.
And as a Realtor, we help people every single day buy and sell properties, every ethnicity, every pronoun. And I will continue to do that and and just assist them any way that I can.
As an individual that comes from a multi-ethnic family, I feel like I have a lens that other people who might not come from the background understand. You know, in blunt terms, my dad is as white as a sheep. I mean, you go to Hawaii, turns into a lobster. My mom has beautiful chocolate skin. And let me tell you, growing up, I was able to see very clearly when we went to different places, how that affected each one of them. And growing up, I felt it was really important to be a voice for those individuals and to point out things that other people couldn't necessarily see. And I'm not blaming anyone, because that's the worst thing ever. It's not about blame. It's about opening people's eyes to see where the opportunities are, to reach out to everybody so that we can make, make everything better. Oh, I wanna say my middle name just for fun, because I'm Pacific Islander, I'm part Hawaiian. My middle name is Ki'ahilele Okumili.
And I thought I had a hard time with Angie's name. You know, the best part of this whole campaign for me is going out into the communities and meeting people. I have the, really, the asset with my campaign manager, Jonathan Castro. He's opened doors for me in conversations that I don't think I could have had as easily. We had our first Hispanic kickoff about a month ago, and we had about 50 Hispanics show up. It was an all Spanish-speaking event. I think, Julie, you were there. You were probably amused by my really bad Spanish. But they were tolerant, and they were excited. There was enthusiasm. They were hopeful. And that's what I see across Salem, getting into these groups of folks that normally do not engage and getting them excited to participate, to make a better Salem.
Thank you. I'll go back to my track record, and I introduce the motion at city council to actually translate every one of our meetings into Spanish and ASL real-time so people could actively participate in our meetings, so they can watch online and actively participate with their government. When I was in this recent short session of the legislature, I co-sponsored a bill that removed the word "alien" from our laws, where we actually referred to people as aliens. So those are just two quick examples of things I've done to help people better engage with their government. Having represented Ward 6 for the past five years, which is the most diverse ward in Salem, it is the only majority-minority ward, I actively work with communities of color frequently and look forward, as mayor, to doing that on a wider, wider scale.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, would you start our closing comments? Again, hard limit of one minute.
Thank you. And I just wanna thank the chamber and thank Capital Auto Group for hosting today. This has been, I think, a really good event for, to have a community conversation. To be an effective mayor, a person must have the experience, depth of knowledge and relationships to create a collaborative environment and to provide the necessary leadership to the council and to the city. The mayor's office is not a place for on-the-job training. What we've seen today are real differences between my opponent and me, and those differences illustrate how I've earned your vote. I'm ready to do this job on day one. I have the experience, relationships, and community support needed to lead our city, and I ask for your support.
And as I've mentioned before, I think with my past experience in state legislative work and city work, that I am ready to lead on day one also, with a little bit of an uptick, not too much. Salem needs to be a better version of itself, and I'm equipped to lead that change and to work with our county and state partners to do that. What are the opportunities to create even more transparency in the work of our police force? I know that Chief Womack would value that discussion and possible strategies. But let me end by saying that although we have problems to solve, I'm very optimistic and hopeful about Salem's resiliency. You could look downtown and see all the new activity going on. You could look at the Willamette Town Center, aka Lancaster Mall, and see the You could look at the Willamette Town Center, aka Lancaster Mall, and see the changes out there. And you can go out to the northeast part of the very far end of Lancaster and Portland Road and see new businesses popping up there. Pretty much, you can see them all over Salem. We need Salem to be a safe, welcoming, and thriving community for all those who choose to live, work, and raise their families here. I'm working hard to be your next mayor, and I would appreciate your consideration of that when you cast your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
I'm encouraged by what I've heard here today, and I hope we can continue to collaborate and create more private-public partnerships to address many of the challenges facing our city. My priorities, if elected to City Council, include encouraging more affordable housing and allowing a variety of other housing choices that do not create hardships for existing homeowners and businesses. I want to focus Salem's climate action plan on practical, affordable strategies that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I want to work to build traffic calming measures and implement safety solutions, including improved bikeways and crosswalks. And I want to support plans to help homelessness that show a good return on investment. I'd also like to end with, thank you, Capital Auto Group, for sponsoring this event and giving us all an opportunity to come together today.
Thank you.
I too want to thank each and every one of you for being here. You've probably figured out by now that public speaking is terrifying to me. But I will tell you that I'm proud to be here. I love this community. I want to see it be better, and I'd like to be a part of making the changes that need to happen. Please vote on May 17th, whether it's whichever ward you're in. It's wildly important that we get out there and voice our opinion by voting. So please vote. Thank you.
I lived in Salem for over 30 years, and I know what I see. I see the struggle and the suffering and the really good things, too, like the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club coming to reality. I see the work of CASA, Marion County Catholic Community Services, United Way, Union Gospel Mission, Liberty House, Family Building Blocks, and others. These groups are making Salem a better place to live. The generosity of Salem's citizens is moving mountains here in the valley and achieving the impossible. Private entities, local businesses, and nonprofits are doing good here. We need more from the city. We need cooperation. We need less roadblocks and more doorways. We need approval for much-needed development and less delays, which only create added expense. Imagine a collaboration where we all take the best of what we have to offer and make Salem a safe place to live, filled with hope for a bright future for everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Julie Hoy, and I'm here to serve.
I love living in West Salem, and I want to continue to represent and work for it. I'm proud of my community. I've spent years working with members of our Neighborhood Association and forming relationships with local nonprofits and community groups. I'm familiar with the issues we face in West Salem, and I know we will have the will and we have the people power to make a difference. I will use my community connections to help bring us together so that we can achieve the West Salem that we want and that we deserve. Together, we will shape Salem's future.
Thanks again for having me here and the rest of the panel for this fun, enjoyable challenge, actually, sometimes. But, you know, the city's communication -- community poll back in August reported that the homeless is out of control and is very visible. The optimism about the direction of the city is on a steady decline and off-track, according to that, and the residents are unsatisfied with the value from the city in taxes and fees. Living in West Salem for the last 17 years, I've been able to come and go across the bridge and see a lot of these things happening firsthand. My priorities will be addressing the homelessness, the crime, and the public safety, and affordable housing. Now is the time to vote in change and to get this back on track. I will put these priorities to work. As a Salem business owner, I seek your support for that change and making Salem a great place to live and work and still have fun.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you join me in thanking these candidates for elected office?[1623.72][1623.72](Applause). We're going to go fast here. Chelsea and Ron, thank you for opening up our show today. Our ambassador team, thank you for all your help, as well as our staff team. Angie and Brent, you define what's best in Salem. You always are pushing forward for positive results, and we salute you each and every day as Spirit of Salem Award recipients. On Saturday evening, April 16th, we've got a big party planned, and that party is officially sold out. We're at 500 tickets, at capacity, and congratulations, Salem. We are going to have an incredible First Citizen banquet. Thank you to our partners Pioneer Trust Bank and Mountain West Investment Corporation for making that happen. In addition to awarding the First Citizen and recognizing the great work of Gary Epping and his sister, Sean Epping Engelberg, we will recognize Rich Schultz as our Outstanding Young Professional. We'll recognize Myron Jones as our Distinguished Service Award winner, along with Mary Jean Sandall and former chief of police Jerry Moore. Probably one of the most special moments, though, is we will have a tribute to our own Jerry Frank, who we lost last month. And many of you probably have one of these that Jerry gave you, and if you don't, ask someone who does. Jerry liked to hand out these glass globes when he was in his 70s and 80s, and he would always tell you, "You now officially have the world in your hand and make great choices going forward." Dick Withnell will lead us in an incredible tribute to our dear friend Jerry Frank, who has passed. Next month, we are going to have another outstanding forum. We invite you to join us on Monday, May 9th, and we will host the University of Oregon Women's Head Basketball Coach, Kelly Graves. Please feel free to wear all of your -- pardon me, yellow and green. Those of you who are stubborn, feel free to wear your orange and black. But we're all going to cheer on Coach Graves, and thank you so much to MAPS Credit Union for making that event possible. Finally, we will conclude in thanking Alex Mathieu, the incredible K-Sphere family. Capital Auto Group is a pillar of Salem. They are our longest member, 95 years in membership, and I think of the incredible work they do across this community. They could have chosen anywhere, and they continue to choose Salem. Thank you both so much for what you do and making this chamber so special. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for affording us a few extra minutes today. Have a terrific afternoon.[1792.62][1792.62](Applause).